Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Warrenville Community Development Committee of the whole regular meeting on Monday, May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Deputy Clerk Gravetti, could I please have the roll call?
Mayor Bremel is absent. Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovitch?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And now's the time we set aside for public comment, citizens' comments. Do we have any one that wishes to? Okay, no emails, no one else. Okay, we'll move on to officials and staff members' comments. The mayor is absent tonight, and just ask if there's any aldermen that have comments. Alderman Lockett?
I got my voice back, but that's bad for Ron because I'm not going to be here. Two meetings, I missed two meetings, so I can't let you leave without having storytime with Alderman Lockett, which I promise we're not going to make like a thing. But I did want to talk just a little bit about Ron before he runs off. I met Ron when we decided to build our business on an empty lot here in Warrenville, and I had to go through the Plan Commission and courtesy review, dealt with Ron, his staff, all that, and it went amazing. It went so well that I wanted to be a part of the Plan Commission. And so when there was an opening, it was July fifth, two thousand and eighteen, around two o'clock, I think, round there, I met with Ron, the mayor, and hadn't had an interview for probably twenty-five years or so, and I was nervous, and I went in there, and it was, it was great, and I knew that that's what I wanted to do. Shortly after, I got a call, asked me if I would join. I said absolutely. So from that time, I kind of watched Ron, tried to mimic Ron, because you're very good at being very straight, very direct, but fair to everybody. So I was on the Plan Commission, and now I'm here. I just didn't want you to leave all your responsibilities, because you're still kind of responsible for me being here, just because of who you were and how much I looked up to you through all of it, so I just wanted you to know that I appreciate it. Thank you, Ron.
Great story, and again, thank you for your dedication to the community and volunteerism. Appreciate it. Any rebuttal, Ron? No? Okay, great words. Are there any other aldermen who would like to make comment at this time? Okay, if not, we'll go to the first, oh, I'm sorry, staff. Is there any staff comments or anything? Okay, let's begin the business of the meeting. And the evening's first agenda item is an informational item, and it's a presentation by Community and Economic Development Director Ron Minzer, and it's about the community and economic development success, challenges, and opportunities. Thank you for taking the time to develop this presentation. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chairman, and good evening to the City Council. I really am enjoying these last meetings. I've had like over thirteen hundred meetings, but we were just talking, and I'm not counting the days, I'm not counting the meetings, I'm not saying all this, you know, there's only two left. I'm actually enjoying them, even though this isn't always my favorite thing to do is make presentations, as you probably have come to gather over the years, but I do really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I've had thirty years of, almost thirty years of experience, first as the Community Development Director for the City of Warrenville, and more recently as the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of Warrenville, being part of, and probably even more fortunate from my perspective, is having a role in impacting how Warrenville has changed over that period of time. It's been pretty, pretty dramatic, pretty extensive, both from an organizational standpoint, but also from a physical and an economic, fortunately, standpoint. I remember when I started, the city kind of was operating on a shoestring budget, was it not, to say the least? All the city facilities were scattered about, some of those facilities were given to the city. Hard to have a professional, well-run municipality, and what, what, what I came into, I think the city was doing as best as it could as at that, at that time. Fortunately, there was a lot of things that fell into place, and over the last thirty years, a lot of positive economic and community development has, has transpired in the, in Warrenville, and what I'd like to do is give you my perspective on kind of the, the top five keys to what I see looking back on my tenure, of why Warrenville has been successful with generating a lot of positive community and economic development perspective, and then leave you with a couple, I think I have four items that I think are both challenges and opportunities for the city going forward, that I think it makes sense to, to pay attention to as, as the community goes into the next phase of its life. So the, the first key from my perspective is the, the city, and I have to say, I remember it as Mayor Lund embracing change. The city truly, it wasn't always easy, it wasn't always popular, but if the city hadn't embraced that change was on the cusp and was going to happen, I don't think they would have created their first Community Development Director position. They certainly wouldn't have hired me, because there would have been no position, and they wouldn't have been a partner with the private sector that ultimately invested, you know, a hundred million dollars or whatever it was, it was, you know, well over fifty million dollars, I think it was like fifty-seven million dollars, actually, that the partnership that developed Cantera invested in the community. The city embraced that, they really did. They, they became a, a very good partner with that project, and because of the city's partnership with it, you know, the redevelopment agreement, the TIF district, the Cantera regulations, the city's commitment to process development applications in a timely, professional manner, laid the foundation for that project actually happening. And it's now the economic lifeblood of the community. More than half of the city's general fund revenues tie back to what's happened in Cantera. About a third of the ERP annual revenues tie back directly to what's happening in the city of Cantera. So I think the, the, the key takeaway from my perspective is that change is always going to happen, it's no different in your life, my life, our families, and it goes the same for the community. Communities constantly evolving and changing. Fortunately, Warrenville has taken a approach to embrace that change, and in my opinion, in my experience, the more you embrace that change and understand that it's going to happen, the more likely you are to manage that change in a manner that maximizes the benefits for the community and minimizes the, the negative impacts. So change, embracing it, seeing it, embracing it is number one. Number two, the city consistently has invested into the development of quality long-term planning documents, planning and policy documents. That's happened over my career, and those long-term planning and policy documents, they're really valuable from a, you know, once you have the final document, they provide a roadmap of how you're going to get from where you're at to where you want to be at some point in the future, which can take a long period of time. Having that document as a reference tool that provides continuity when there's transition in staff and elected officials, having, going through the process to develop those policy documents engages the community when done properly, and it helps ensure that the city's long-term plans and goals and objectives are aligned with, and there's buy-in and support from the community, which is essential, because a lot of the things that we get involved with from the community, these aren't simple things, they're complicated things, they take a long period of time, you need to have the support and buy-in from the community. These plans are also critically important. If you're going to apply and be successful in, in locking down grants like we have, it's critically important to have high-quality plans and documents, policy documents that show that the grant funding is actually going to help fund the implementation of something that the community said that they wanted to and the city had committed to in their long-term plans. And then last but not least, the other value of the plan, specifically kind of when I look at it from a development perspective, is that those plans that we've developed, they don't sit on the shelf from a, a city perspective. We have a history of developing quality plans, engaging in that process to make sure that they're going to be useful when they're ultimately endorsed by the City Council. When they are endorsed by the City Council, city staff, I know from the Community Development Department, were constantly using those documents to direct channel developers and, and others that are looking to invest in our community, to help make sure that those investments are designed and hopefully advancing the goals and objectives in the, the community plans that we've adopted, and if they're not, here's the types of changes that you can make to bring your proposals in alignment with those goals and objectives. If you bring it in alignment with those goals and objectives, you have a good opportunity to be successful in receiving the approvals that you're going to need to, to implement those projects. So having those plans allows us to more effectively engage and collaborate with the private sector, and that kind of brings me to my third key is collaboration, not only with the private sector, but with our public sector, overlapping taxing district partners. I think Warrenville's got a, a great reputation and track record of trans, being very transparent and listening to the private sector folks, developers, people that are looking to invest in our community, but also the public sector people that we're partnering with to make the community better, to understand their concerns, issues, and needs, trying to address those issues and concerns and needs as we implement the work that we do. I think that has led to very strong relationships between the City of Warrenville and its overlapping districts, strong relationships with quality people in the development real estate community that have invested and continue to invest in our community. They know that they can trust us, that we're a good partner, and we're going to give them good direction, and we're not going to, they're not going to waste time, energy, and money working in City of Warrenville, they can trust us, and that there's going to be a positive outcome if they're following the direction that the city has set forth. And last but not least, on collaboration, I think it's a hallmark of the Community Development Department's approach is that we pride ourselves on not just providing information and outlining regulations and presenting hurdles and roadblocks, but as much as anything, identifying solutions and trying to figure out ways that we can get to something in the end that makes sense for everybody involved. So having that solutions-oriented mentality, I think, is a big part of the success from a community and economic development perspective up to this point in time. Wouldn't be a presentation from Ron if you didn't hear about process. We've, over time, developed and refined processes. I am particularly proud of the, the, the way the city uses those processes, refines those processes, adjusts those processes as best as possible to engage the public, to be transparent with the people that we're serving, whoever they are, they could be residents, they could be businesses, they could be people that are investing into new development in our community. But the goal of our process is to make good decisions in a strategic manner that's open to everybody, and if, I think if you look at historically how we do that, that's one of the strengths of our community. We make good decisions because we trust the process. A recent example that I think you all remember, Larry will remember, is the Water Tower and Well Project. You know, if, if that was a foregone conclusion, we didn't want to trust the process, it would have been a different project, and there would have been a lot of unhappy people in the community. I think going through that process, being honestly engaged in that process, genuinely embracing that project, the end result that we got to was a good outcome for most all involved, I think. It might not be exactly what everybody wanted, might not be the cheapest outcome, but I think it was the best outcome when you look at collective labor body that was involved with it. And the, the last thing on process is that people that are interested in, interested or thinking about developing or investing in our community, the, when they know that there's a process that they can count on and they know it's predictable, especially in local government, that's a commodity. That's something that we pitch to the development community all of the time, and I, I think there's some real value in that today and going forward, so I would suggest that don't forget about how important the process is, ever. And then last but not least, TIF. From my perspective, TIF has been a God-saving tool for the City of Warrenville. When I look at what has happened in the community, all the positive things that the city has been able to accomplish, reinvesting into it, the community enhancements, the strength of the city's budget, even not TIF revenue into the city's budget at this point in time, but half of the revenue that we have, again, from Cantera, that project would not have happened without a TIF district. The fact that we had a second TIF district, that we were able to legally port a lot of the revenue, TIF revenue that was being generated in Cantera into the older part of the community to upgrade the infrastructure in the older part of the community, to provide modern-day public facilities that were safe and allowed the community to provide professional service to the community, to be a good partner to those that are looking to invest in our community. And yeah, if you have better facilities, you can do that more effectively, to develop into one of the safest communities. Having a safe facility is part, having a facility that's conducive to that is part of that process. So from my perspective, I, I can't even imagine what the community would be today without having, taking advantage of the use of TIF districts. I know they can be controversial, and there are those that criticize the way the city has used them today, in the past, in the future, but I think if we trust our process and we continue to plan appropriately, we listen to people, even when they're critical of how we're using the TIF districts, I'm pretty certain that, and I trust that the community collectively, the organization's going to use them in a responsible manner, and the city is going to continue to reap long-term benefits from the TIF district. So I hope they don't ever make it, the state doesn't make it such that TIF districts don't become a useful tool, not so much for the City of Warrenville, because I don't see that, you know, it's going to be a huge part after the TIFs that we have. It might, there might be some opportunities, but for other communities that are like Warrenville that need to find a tool that can bridge that gap and help them do the types of things that the City of Warrenville has, TIF is really an important tool from a municipality perspective. So looking forward, I think one of the biggest challenges that is lingering out there, looming out there for the City of Warrenville, actually involves Cantera. I, I'll call it Cantera two-point-zero. What is that going to be? When Cantera was developed, Cantera was the best of everything, the best planning, the best consultants, the best design, the best investment, do it all properly, the best zoning configuration. It was cutting-edge, and it was responding to the market at that point in time, and what the market was, what Cantera wanted to do is have the best mixed-use office development in the suburban area, so a suburban office market, basically, and it did just that. And at the time when I started, I couldn't believe how flexible the development control regulations that the city and the developer put together to control what happened in Cantera were. But again, they were developed at a specific point in time, and as time has gone by, what once was the cutting-edge hasn't been able to keep up with the changing nature of society, of demographics, of the real estate market, people's preferences. I mean, there's a lot of things happening in the world that have made some of the, the things that happened in Cantera somewhat antiquated at this point in time. Remote work is not going away, I don't care what my, people like me want it to go away, it's not going to go away, it's going to be there forever. So I think that's changed forever, the nature of office in a suburban office setting like Cantera. So the takeaway from my perspective is that it's, the city's approach to Cantera is going to have to change. I'm not saying dramatic change, but it's going to have to change, and I think the city has been willing to change. There's been some of the projects that, I think appropriately so, the city been, has been willing to understand what's going on in the bigger market in the world, and making some pretty extensive revisions to some of the approvals that, foundational improvements or approvals that apply to the Cantera project, one of which, a couple of which are the two multifamily projects that have recently gotten completed in the Cantera project, the two Class A apartment buildings. I know there was a lot of contention, I was part of that process, I listened to people at the public hearing, and at the City Council for that matter, taking issue with adding that residential density into the, into the community, into Cantera, and some were advocating for, we, we need to, it's an office park, we need to get office, non-residential. I'm just telling you, office is not coming back. They haven't built a new office in the east-west corridor for twenty years, and the physical vacancy rate of the office buildings in Cantera is like, even though there's, it's like a twenty-five or twenty-six percent vacancy rate, least vacancy rate, the, the physical vacancies rate's way beyond fifty percent. And that, that, that might moderate a little bit, but that's not going to change. Nobody, nobody's going to be building any corporate offices, that's just Cantera, that's not the rest of the east-west corridor. Nobody's going to be building any corporate offices in the east-west corridor. So the city is going to have to, to, it doesn't have to, my feeling is that the city's going to be best served by working through some kind of a, a long-term public planning process with some expert consultants from maybe other areas of the United States where they've already started to successfully figure out how to transition from what Cantera was, and kind of is still, to something else more intentionally. We've done it reactionary, when developers have come to the city, like these developers that have wanted to do some multifamily, we had some idea that it might make sense here or there, we kind of directed them to those locations as an alternative to office that wasn't going to happen, or alternative to a, a commercial parking lot that wasn't being used. But the fact of the matter is, keeping with kind of our experience in the past, if the city is more intentional about investing into developing a long-term plan of how to take advantage of the remaining vacant property in Cantera and help prepare for and direct and guide the redevelopment of some of the buildings and other areas of Cantera in a manner that adds to the vitality of the project going forward, so that Cantera continues to be what it always has, a very sound and strong engine for the community. One of the things that I think is worth noting is that there's a huge amount of, there's not only twenty-five acres of vacant property that could still be developed, there's a huge amount of unused parking out in the Cantera project, and that's an opportunity for the city. People own that land right now, they're, they're really not able to redevelop that land right now, because the parking regulations that the city has in place, the Cantera regulations from thirty years ago require that parking, but that's certainly, to me, that's an opportunity that, you know, you could redevelop that, a lot of that parking and put it into a better use going forward that would add to the vitality of the project. And then residential, I think residential is probably going to need to continue to be a, an option that the city considers in Cantera going forward. Residential brings people, people brings vitality. Having quality residential close by attracts, it's an amenity for business. Business follows talent, so if you create quality, desirable residential, businesses are going to follow those, and we're kind of at a unique position in my opinion from, not unique, we're in a good position in Warrenville. While remote work is a challenge for many reasons, there's not a lot of occupancy, or there's reduced occupancy, the fact that people can re, work remotely, and they don't have to travel to downtown to go to the corporate offices, more and more, I think the pendulum is swinging back in communities that have kind of a unique character and special things to offer, a sense of place, open space, some space, have a unique floor, small-town flavor, are diverse, those are the types of communities that remote workers are going to be increasingly attracted to, I think, going forward. So I think those are characteristics that Warrenville has, has embraced and continues to, should continue to invest in. Walkability is another one. I think continuing to invest in making your community walkable, walkable will continue to make the community more attractive to people in the future, the type of people you want to attract that will be adding positively to the vitality of the community. Second opportunity and challenge is housing. I truly believe that one of the strengths of Warrenville historically has been the relative affordability, attainability of housing and the diversity of housing in the City of Warrenville. I think we've continued to build on that, and strategically, we've had a lot of new multifamily development, some apartment developments that have, are high-quality projects that have added a lot of new, you know, people that have, they're quality people, they have relatively high disposable income, they're able to support the, the businesses in our community going forward, they add those, those new heads and people add to the vitality of the areas that they're located in. But there is this middle area that I don't, we've got all the, the stuff that we've had in the community before, and we built the new stuff that's responding to a certain extent to the changing demographics and nature of residential real estate, which is definitely looking for rental project, but we don't have any small-scale rental that's kind of in the middle. I've talked I've talked to a lot of people, they're filling up the, you know, the new apartment projects in Cantera and out on 59, which are really expensive because that's really the only option they have in Warrenville right now. There's no, nothing in the middle for them to rent. All the stuff that's on the, the lower end of the spectrum is all rented, fully occupied. And some of them are, a lot of those people that I talk to, they want to have something a little nicer than that, something in the middle between that lower-end stuff and the stuff that's got built. And we don't have that, so I think there's, you know, that's a, a missing link in our housing that the, the city needs to pay attention to going forward. We adopted a housing action plan that identified the missing middle as an opportunity for the city to focus on. The other housing issue I think is going to be a challenge going forward is that there is a lot of relatively affordable housing that got built in the community 30, 40 years ago in a relatively condensed period of time. So it's all similar of age and it wasn't the, the best quality construction, at least the building materials. And it's all coming kind of age at the same, at the same time. And I think those areas of the community are areas that the, there would be probably benefits if the city can figure out how to tap into some outside funding to help incentivize and support people reinvesting and upgrading and repairing and maintaining their homes so they continue to be desirable, affordable housing options in the community going forward. The, the third challenge and opportunity from my perspective is parking. We just have way too much parking. And we have way too much parking is because our codes require too much parking. We have a suburban zoning ordinance from 30-some years ago and it was developed at a time when, you know, everybody was very auto-centric. And from my perspective, that's what we have out in the community now. And when you drive around the community, with the exception of a couple of residential projects, you'll see that we, we require way too much parking. And from my perspective, there's really no benefit to the city of Warrenville for requiring too much parking. I honestly believe we would be better off as a community. This might sound super aggressive, but if you had a choice of having no parking regulations or having the parking regulations that we have and we're stuck with, we'd be better off with no parking regulations and occasionally having a parking problem than having acres and acres of asphalt in the community that's not doing anything but creating problems. It creates problems from a community character standpoint, it creates environmental problems, it increases the cost of development if that development's residential, it increases, sometimes unnecessarily increases the cost of the housing, so it makes it less affordable. It takes up valuable land. Warrenville's a landlocked community and land is a commodity for us. So occupying it with asphalt that's unnecessary is not a good thing. Fiscally, it doesn't make sense when you have big parking lots, you're, you're providing utilities, streets, sidewalks, and you're running those sidewalks and those utilities feet and feet of a miles of them across parking lots, along parking lots. It would be much better to be putting those parking lots into a better use that's actually housing people, generating economic opportunity for the community, enhancing the vitality of the community and making it more attractive for additional private investment, whoever that might be, businesses and our residences, residential people looking to move here. And then finally, I think a big challenge and opportunity is continuing to figure out how and what the city needs to do to enhance the sense of place in the city of I think, you know, when you go back, when I go back and think about my career in Warrenville and, and my time as a resident in Warrenville for that matter, and the people I interact with in Warrenville and the people are always like, why can't we have more of this? Why can't we have this? Why is there nothing ever happens on the property across the street from City Hall? Why, why, why? And then you see incremental little things happen. Evelyn Eve and the amount of people that gravitate towards, towards Evelyn Eve and interact socially and just love that as an oppo, take, people take pride in Evelyn Eve, having that outdoor seating area out there. And that's certainly, from my perspective, that's a big opportunity, especially in the, starting in the core area of the community. We have long-term plans that show we want this type of incremental, small-scale business that are owned and driven by local people that care about the community. But we've really had a challenge in trying to make that happen on any type of, I think, noteworthy basis. And how do we do that? I don't have all the answers. I think we need to, as a community, look, continue to look for opportunities to reduce barriers that would allow for incremental, small-scale development, whatever those are, codes, reducing costs for that type of thing. I think we need to continue to look to provide assistance to try to make that happen. Listen to the businesses and the people that are trying to make that happen. Why aren't they able to make it? What, what could the city's role be in that? Engage with them, develop relationships with them. It certainly is economically challenging and I think there's a place for the city, the Muslimin property, to take the lead when the private sector can't make it happen. I, some of the biggest, one of the biggest accomplishments from my personal career in Warrenville is playing the role I did in helping the city to acquire, assemble, clean up, go through multiple RFP, RFQ processes, finally partner with a quality developer, a local developer that cared about their reputation, cared about the community, to implement essentially the city's plan for the redevelopment of the Muslimin property. That would never have happened if the city didn't take the, the lead and some risk and invest the time, energy and resources over a long period of time to make that happen. It wouldn't have made sense for the private sector. The only way that made sense is we had a TIFF district fortunately that allowed the city to invest the money to prepare that property so that it was attractive to a developer. We sold the property to the developer at a price that it made sense for the developer to implement the city's vision for the property. And the city is going to recoup its investment and more over a longer period of time through the TIFF district, which isn't, you know, the private sector can't do that. They don't have the ability to just go implement a TIFF district. So I think looking for those, the Old Town Civic Center or Old Town Redevelopment Site Number Two is another great example of where, in my opinion, it clearly is the right thing for the city to do, to take the lead on preparing that property to get it to a point where it would be able to be redeveloped and have some private sector redevelopment along the frontage in a form that the community has kind of embraced and it's the right scale and the right type of stuff for that area of our community. Is it going to be easy? No. Is it going to take a long time? Yeah. Is it going to cost, the city's going to have to upfront that investment? Yeah. But I think in the long-term, people are going to look back 15, 20 years down the road and say, I'm glad my city did that. That one may not, we may not make, we may, may not make all of our money back on that one. But if we didn't get involved, I don't know what it would look like in 20 years from now. It's certainly not going to look like what it's going to look like when the city is taking the lead on that. So being willing to kind of stick your neck out, I'm not saying take stupid risks. I'm taking, taking some measured, calculated risks. We know we have a TIFF district that's going to provide funding. We've developed a lot of collaboration and relationships with outside folks that will help provide funding to make that, that project happen and minimize the city's risks. But it is still going to be a challenge for the city to actually get some private development on that property. And the city may have to be pretty aggressive, at least initially, to try to get the first two, one or two projects, which hopefully and most likely will be hopefully people from the community that care about the community and aren't all-in just to make a return on investment. Because that's not where you're going to do it if you're a developer. There's too much, there's not enough upside opportunity to make a big profit there. We need to find people and embrace and bring people to the table that are people from the community that, that care about the community and want to enhance the community, maybe make some money along the way, but their main goal is going to be to enhance the community because they care about the community. And they're going to need the city to support that to happen. Okay. That's it.
There was a lot there and.
And I have a cheat sheet I'll hand out for you, but I didn't want to give you all the answers upfront.
We were all taking notes. I looked down the dais and really appreciate what you've done and certainly your care for the community is significant and applauded by each of us up here. So thank you for, for all of that. Are there any other comments or questions regarding Ron's presentation? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. I guess mine's a comment since you've answered all the questions. I was going to have a middle housing thing, missing middle, but you answered that. So I just want to quickly say, Ron, thank you. You have an amazing way of explaining these sorts of things so that not only elected officials and staff can understand, but that the community can understand. And so I want to thank you for all of that. Just a second, I've got too many pieces of paper. But I'd also just like to take a minute to go back and remember. So before I did this job that I love, I helped other people get elected and was on, on groups of people. And we had some early cheerleaders for TIFF One and one of them was Mary Lund who's here. So I would like to thank her. I remember going to her house several times for TIFF tutorials and we would, we didn't really know what was going on, but she did. And we learned and we figured it out, how to communicate it. I would, so thank you Vivian. Dave, Mayor Bremel has gone on to be a huge cheerleader and not only for our community, but as he meets with other communities. I would also like to, to thank staff. Your community development area takes the lead, but I've had TIFF discussions with finance, public works and administration. So everybody has learned the benefits of, as you call it, this amazing tool. And we have used it well and people outside of, of our city have, have commented of that and know that. And as you said, we have followed an honest, straightforward process. And everybody has come together to teach Alderman after Alderman after Alderman how this works. And it's just been, it's an interesting journey, I guess, is what I'm saying. So there's just a lot of people I think have been involved that sometimes don't get recognized. But in my journey, it's those people that I mentioned and other, other Aldermen and people that, we've talked about it, not more than two together though, but we've talked about it. And it's been an interesting process. And now to see the results of that is just a miracle. And we, you're right, we would not have gotten there without TIFF. So thank you. And that's all I wanted to say.
Alderman Berry?
The first time I ran for election in Ward Four, I lost. And I was like, okay, I'm done, that's it. And I got a call from Vivian Lund and she said, hey, how would you like to be on the Plan Commission? I was like, oh my God, really? What is that? I said, sure, why not? I'll try it. And I spent two years on the Plan Commission and it was an amazing experience. I learned so much about the community, how we operate here at the city, how we treat the developers. It just, you know, what's the difference between a retention and a detention? It just was such a great experience because of you, Ron, because you were so kind. I really knew nothing. And you held my hand the whole way. And because of that, two years later, I was able to run and for Alderman and I was elected at that time. But the only reason that happened was because what I learned about the city and how the city works. So I want to thank you for that. And since that time, this city has gone through major, major developments. I've now lived in Warrenville for 42 or 43 years. There were less than 4,000 people when I moved here. Emerald Green was just a subdivision right there on Batavia Road and there was nothing else around it. Nothing. There was just nothing. And it's really grown. I decided that when I was going to run for Alderman, my concern was what was going to happen on Route 59. It was a big area that really needed to be developed. Of course, Cantera at that time was a big hole in the ground when I first moved here. And, but when I ran, 59 was totally not developed. I didn't think it was ever going to happen and I am so glad that we have TIFF Four and that was developed and look, finally, what has taken place. So you have had your finger on every part of this community and you have made this community work. So I thank you very much.
Okay. Again, thank you for the excellent presentation on behalf of all of us. Really appreciate it. We'll move on to the second agenda item, which is the update on the Traditional Development Zoning Ordinance Revision Initiative. And Assistant Community Development Director Consuelo Arguias will introduce this informational agenda item.
Thank you and good evening. I want to welcome you as the two new Aldermen. First of all, to trustee Agostinovich and Alderman Wilkie, welcome. I look forward to working with you. I'm here to provide an update on what is known as the Traditional Zoning Code, Traditional Development Zoning Code update. As a reminder to many of you, this initiative is in response to several long-term plans that the city has adopted over the years. The first and foremost is the city's Old Town Civic Center Subarea Plan. The Strategic Economic Plan and the Housing Action Plan also encourage this initiative to move forward. The intent is to encourage redevelopment or redevo, new development, private new development and business reinvestment in those parts of Old Town or the Civic Center Subarea along Batavia Road, for example, to include traditional-oriented mixed-use and missing-middle housing projects. This week's task include the work group meeting with our consultant, Quotometrics, that we've identified to take a lead on this project, not only the work group meeting, but also the consultant holding listening sessions with a select group of stakeholders in the community, which are made up of property and business owners that were identified based on their interest in the project area and their involvement with current press projects. You may have heard from the public that the city did not invite the general public to these listening sessions, but I'm here to clarify that the intent of these listening sessions are first and foremost to be informal and the first step with the Quotometrics to have an opportunity to hear select stakeholders in the community regarding what their thoughts are on the city, regarding the part of the city that they were going to be focusing on, just to gauge public, general public feedback from those stakeholders. There are not meant to be public hearings. I assure you that the public meetings that will take place will have proper legal notice and invitation to the general public to participate in that process, which is anticipated to take place this summer. With that, I conclude my update and could answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you again. This is so important and communities forget this, how important it is on a kind of controversial over the years piece of property, that when the community's brought in and you've already talked about it, that it makes a huge difference for buy-in and for, you know, everyone's talking about stuff and sometimes they don't have the right information or whatever and sort of bring them into these groups. And I know it takes an effort, but I think it's just a huge part of the process that I'm glad that community development understands that and does it so well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Again, that was an informational item, so thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is consideration of consultant contracts for various private development plan review services. And Senior Civil Engineer Christine Hocking will introduce this item.
Thank you and good evening. In 2017, with the upcoming large development. Thank you, and good evening. In 2017, with the upcoming large developments that are now built, like Lexington Trace and Everton, we, the city entered into agreements with two consultants for plan reviews of those private developments. One of them is Engineering Resource Associates, who continues to provide engineering services for the city. The other one was James J. Bennison Associates. James J. Bennison Associates recently permanently shut down its business operations. They had been actually the original engineering consultant to the city back when Cantera was actually built. They provided services for the city on all facets of consultant reviews, including engineering, stormwater, traffic, wetland, best management practices, construction engineering. They are one, one shop stop. So they were going to be very hard to fill those shoes. Because of that, we had to, since we only had one engineering consultant on board, if that consultant was to be the developer's engineer, for example, we would then not have another engineer to do the reviews on behalf of the city. So because of that, we reached out to various other consultants to obtain qualifications. The city had been in various other contracts with these consultants. For example, Kimley Horn was assisting us with the Old Town Redevelopment Site Number Two, the, the original site development for that area. Another firm, Ballinger Environmental, actually was working with James J. Bennison Associates to help with environmental reviews. So we were indirectly using BEI previously as well. And then Gaywalt Hamilton Associates was actually identified from the, and recommended to the city from James J. Bennison's president, who was a traffic engineer. He recommended them when I reached out to him for any other consultants that do traffic reviews. Traffic reviews are kind of a niche engineering review or specialty that not many engineering companies have. So you ask why? For. So Engineering Resource Associates, Ballinger Environmental, Kimley Horn, and Gaywalt Hamilton, they all have different services that they provide. Unfortunately, not one provides services all the gamut, just like James J. Bennison Associates. So that's why we had to kind of pick and choose couples of consultants to, so that we would cover essentially all of our bases. Ballinger Environmental only does wetland reviews. Gaywalt Hamilton will only do traffic reviews. ERA does everything except for traffic. And Kimley Horn does a little bit of everything, but they don't do environmental. So you kind of see why we need for engineering services. Because some of these are very specific reviews, like wetlands and traffic, staff doesn't have the capabilities or qualifications to do those types of reviews. And in addition, obviously, sometimes, or in the future, if we have another large development like Lexington Trace or Everton, that's something that staff will not have the capability or the time to perform those reviews. So we would use them for any of those larger private development. Smaller private development is usually handled in-house, but like I said, it's nice to have these consultants in case we need to do. So these contracts are as needed. It's not guaranteed that we will, will need them, but most likely we will, especially the wetland and the traffic. We followed, this is one of the special circumstances as identified in the city's qualification-based selection process that was adopted by the city council in 2011. And obviously, these consultants are the, in the best position to provide the most efficient services for the city because they have worked with the city in the past. I did review the attached proposals that you'll see in your backup, and their scope of services obviously are reasonable. And I know that they can perform them, and their hourly rates are reasonable as well. So staff does recommend that the committee pass, or recommend the city council that to pass resolutions approving these for consultant contracts.
Thank you. It's very surprising that James J. Bennison is not going to be involved in city business any longer. They've been with us since the beginning of Cantera and maybe even before that. But it's, I guess, as Ron says, important to embrace change. So here's another change that we have to embrace. And appreciate staff going through the efforts to study the backgrounds and all the experiences of these other consultant groups that we'll be hiring. Because, you know, Bennison was there for all these different reasons. And now staff has done a great job looking at the experience levels and backgrounds of all these other consultants. So I appreciate your efforts at that. Are there questions from the aldermen? Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, just to be clear on this, with regards to the budgets, you anticipate that there shouldn't be any kind of increase, that just kind of swapping one for another?
Sorry, total budget. So in the budget, every year, we obviously put a budgeted amount for consultant services. For example, back in twenty, let's see, I wrote it down. Let's see, it's twenty twenty-three or now, twenty, I believe it was FY twenty or FY twenty-one, we had a budget about, or we actually used about $215,000. You think about that, that was in the height of Lexington Trace and Everton. For this year's budget, we put in $50,000 for engineering consultant reviews. However, those are paid for by the developers as part of their permit fees, engineering review fees, final engineering fees. So we anticipate that we won't spend more than $50,000 for these types of review services, but that's being paid for mostly by all those permit fees.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
There. Alderman Krakenberg?
So as I understand, the, you'll, you'll have four engineering firms. And so you'll divvy out the work to them based on the project, the type of project and the scope of the work?
Correct. We typically, first, we see if any of the consultants are actually working for the developer. And that kind of narrows it down. But based upon the scope of services, or scope of the development, and how big it is, and how experienced one firm is with another, we will pick and choose which firm we think is the most capable for that specific project. Sometimes it occurs where there's multiple projects going on at once. So we end up divvying it up amongst that.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Like to make a motion that city council pass resolution approving the four consultant contracts referenced in the May third, 2023 memo from Senior Civil Engineer Hocking.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and say whether we're in favor or not. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you again for presentation. Next, we have the update on the condition and the distribution of the magnolia tree saplings. And Director Mensah will introduce this informational agenda item. Ron?
Thank you. The story goes on. You might recall that at the last Community Development Committee meeting, the senior civil engineer, or the, our civil engineer, David Romero, presented to the city council the plan that the EAC had developed to distribute the saplings at the now past Arbor Day event. So about a week, ten days before the event was to occur, we contacted the horticulturist that had generated the saplings from the cuttings to schedule a delivery of those. And his response was that they had an unforeseen incident occur with the saplings. And apparently, what happened is the saplings were being kept in a kind of a temporary hoop house, which is like a quasi greenhouse that allows light to come in, to overwinter them. And a groundhog decided to somehow get into the, the place they were being kept and chewed off all of the growth. So there were like little, every plant was like a little stub. So there was really nothing to, to auction off or give away at the Arbor Day event. We did take ownership of the, what's left of them. They seem to be getting little buds, like they're going to regrow back. But it's going to take a year or so before they start growing again. And they would be in a position where we could, somebody would be comfortable in planting them out in their yard and not think they're just a, you know, a dead stick. So we do have them. The consultant that did the work for us did not charge us. And we are working with volunteers to foster groups of saplings back to life so that we can distribute them at a future, hopefully, next year Arbor Day event.
Thank you for the update. Alderman Davalos has a question.
Thank you. I was so counting on one of, I was going to bid a lot of money. Anyway, this happens. I know all about groundhogs. So nobody has to convince me the damage they can do. But I also believe things do regrow. So I think, I guess I just want to say thank you. I think that was the best solution possible. And with a hope and a prayer, maybe we'll, we'll get a few. So it was so unexpected, though. Anyway, thanks for the update.
Anyone else? Okay. I don't believe we have any other questions or comments regarding this item. Thanks for the update. The next item is the discussion of staff recommendation to include Plan Commission Chairman and the future city council economic development representatives discussions. And Director Mensah will again present this item. Ron?
Thank you. So part of the city, one component of the city's process that is proven to be especially valuable as we react to development proposals, economic development incentive requests, is to work closely with a couple of representatives of the city council to talk through those proposals, get feedback from the city council that we can use to inform our discussions with the developer or business that's looking for incentives or likely, or potentially going to be looking to do some kind of development in the community. So in the past, probably going back about ten years now, the city council designated two of its members to kind of represent them in those economic development type discussions with staff. That's all along the way has been Alderman Ashauer and Mayor Brummel. I think those meetings have been extremely productive. I think Alderman Ashauer and Mayor Brummel have done a really good job in representing the kind of thought and concerns and feedback from the overall city council. So it's worked really well. Part of that process involves staff presenting information and helping guide to a point that seems to make sense from an economic decision standpoint. Ultimately, if there's any formal decisions or actions that are necessary, those are all brought back to the city council for review and ultimately, final action. But it's been a very useful group. I would say that I, I've helped facilitate that because I gathered, acquired a lot of institutional knowledge about the community, individual properties, individual property owners, that has been extremely valuable in those discussions. And to some extent, when I retire, that's going to go away. And one of the things that we talked about, I talked about and recommended to the economic development representatives at our last meeting, was the thought of including Chairman Cosgrove from our Plan Commission in those discussions going forward. Chairman Cosgrove has been on the Plan Commission for, I think, like forty years at this point in time. He's very aware and has a deep understanding of all the city's rules, regulations that affect and can control how development happens. He pays attention to, he's probably watching the meeting tonight. He watches most every single meeting that the city has. And he attends, of course, all the Plan Commission meetings. He's now the chairman. So I think he's especially equipped to provide some of that institutional knowledge and, you know, long-term view of the properties and the people that are involved in those properties that I might have otherwise been able to share to help inform the decisions and direction of the economic development representatives. So we talked about it at the last Economic Development Representatives Meeting. And I believe that both Alderman Ashauer and Mayor Brummel were okay, acceptable, supportive of including Chairman Cosgrove going forward. I did have a follow-up conversation with Chairman Cosgrove to verify that he would be available and interested in, to participate in those conversations going forward. And he confirmed that he would, and he thought he could add value to those conversations. So at this point in time, we really don't need, this is an informal group, we don't really need direction from the city council to add him. But wanted to make sure that, you know, we had talked about it, and that's what our plan was. Wanted to address any questions or concerns you might have about that. And of course, if the majority of the city council says that's a bad idea, then that's not something we would do.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion points that people want to bring to this agenda item before we leave it? Alderman Lockett?
No, I would just say, I think it's a great idea. I think we're kind of, with Ron leaving and with his institutional knowledge of thirty years, we're replacing it with forty. So Cosgrove gets him by ten more. So I would definitely be in favor.
It's also great to have, you know, members of the, longstanding members of the community who have lived here, you know, that have the awareness and also the concern for the community and the development of the sense of place, as you mentioned. Other, other comments? Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I just want to add that tonight, we've heard from Alderman Lockett and Alderman Berry about their time on Plan Commission, and how much that prepared them for being an alderman. And so I think it's a wonderful place to be drawing somebody from. And we're lucky to have someone that's been there that long and knows the city so well. So I think it's a great idea. Thanks.
Okay, great. We'll move on to the next item, which is to review and file the final Community Development Department Fiscal Year 2023 Work Program Update. And if there's no questions or comments regarding this, this item, we will go ahead and file it, seeing none. We'll go ahead to the seventh and final agenda item for this evening, and that is to review and file the bimonthly code enforcement activity report. Does anyone wish to make comment on this report? Okay, seeing none. There's no other business to discuss. There's one other action item, and I defer to Alderman Lockett.
I'd like to make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and good evening.